Good afternoon. At this time, I call Suffolk City Work Session to order. Be advised that Councilman Williams and Councilman Ward will not be present for the work session, and both have been excused. Our first item is a presentation of the Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Tealyn Hanson, Director of Finance, will provide some opening remarks, and introduce the city's auditor, who will present you your annual financial report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. It is that time of year where you're going to start seeing me on a regular basis through early spring, so yay! Tonight, though, I am pleased and very excited to come and present the results of our annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. And before we get into it too much, I would like to take just a minute to say thank you publicly to all of my staff and the staff throughout the city who have put in a tremendous effort to get all of the documentation and all of the things done that we need to get done in order to make this audit and financial report writing a success. So I do thank all of the staff throughout the city that have provided us support through that. I also want to thank our auditors, who've provided a great deal of support as well. So, talk a little bit about the audit process. It is required annually for us to put this very large book together with all of the financial statements and results of the city, as well as all the notes and information that goes along with it. Once we get it all put together, the auditors come in and audit those financial statements, notes, and some of the schedules, and then they will present their opinion. They give us an opinion on whether or not the financial statements and information is presented fairly, and they have some opinions on some attestation work that they do as it relates to compliance and internal controls. But I'm not going to tell you what the results of those are. Our auditor is here to give you the work that they have done. So, over the next few slides, couple slides, I will talk to you about the results of the fiscal year 2022 from a financial standpoint. First, I want to remind City Council and those listening that last fall, well, a year ago fall, I guess, at this point in time, City Council adopted a new fund balance policy that requires our fund balance to, our unassigned fund balance, to be set at 20% of the following year's budget. So that is of 20% of fiscal year 2023's budget. Any additional or remaining surpluses, once we meet that 20%, will go through what we have termed the waterfall, wherein we will have $500,000 set aside for one-time funding of some capital purchases or needs throughout the city. And then, remaining from that, up to 50% of the surplus, remaining surplus, will go to a budget stabilization fund until that fund reaches 2.5% of the fiscal 2023 budgeted revenues, or the following fiscal year's 2023 revenues. And then the remaining surpluses will go to a capital reserve fund with no cap on that capital reserve fund that can be used for, to help us with our CIP and with our cash funded, cash funding in our CIP. So where did we land for fiscal year 2022? Prior year fund balance, unassigned fund balance was at 81 million. Based on the 20% calculation, the unassigned fund balance for fiscal year 2022 needed to be 93.9 million. We have achieved that 93.9 million. The fiscal year 2022 surplus was in the neighborhood of 26.2 million, due primarily to some outstanding revenue as it related to local taxes from meals, sales, the use type of taxes. We did, property taxes also came in over budget, and there's a budget schedule that you can see where we've exceeded the revenue projections, as well as some expenditure savings on the expenditure side of things, which caused a $26.2 million surplus for fiscal So what did we do with that? Of course, we needed some of it to go from 81 million to 93.9 million in the unassigned fund balance, and then the cumulative balances from the prior year balances, adding what we could this year. The budget stabilization fund is fully funded at 11.7 million, and the capital projects reserve sits at 21.9 million. I would caution you all that as we went through the CIP discussions, we are, we have already have a plan in place to put about half of that into the CIP over the next five years. So we do have planned spend, planned spending down on that as we go into the CIP process for this, for fiscal year 2024 and beyond. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have, and then I will introduce Laura Harden, who is our partner with Cherry Beckett, who is here to provide the results of their audit and the required auditor communications. I can take questions now, or when she is done with her remarks at any time.
Council, you have questions now? Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Council on any questions? Councilman Goldberg?
I guess I want to put it in one word, or maybe a couple words, looks, looks good.
Thank you.
Looks great. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Ms. Hanson.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. I am pleased to be here today to present the results of the June 30, 2022 Audit of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the City of Suffolk. As Ms. Hanson mentioned, I was the engagement director on this engagement. In addition, we also have other team members who play a very vital role in the audit of the financial statements. Ray Melendez is the manager, who worked very hard day-to-day with the Finance Department and others within the city to accomplish the audit, along with John Beecham, who is our audit senior. We also have Rob Churchman, who you might remember from previous presentations, who was our second partner reviewer. He gives us that fresh set of eyes after all of our procedures are performed, to make sure that we're putting out the best result to you. Now, I'd say probably this is the most important slide, the results of our audit of the financial statements. We issued our report on November 23, 2022. We did issue an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. That is the best result that you can receive as a result of your audit of the financial statements. As a part of the audit, we are also required to perform an audit under government auditing standard, as well as the Commonwealth of Virginia's audit specifications for audits of counties, cities, and towns. We did not issue any, or note, I, sorry, any instances of noncompliance, which are required to be reported under government auditing standards. We did note two matters of nonmaterial noncompliance under the Virginia specifications. Those items are reported as Items 2022-001 and 2022-002 in the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. We did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting. If we identified any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control, we would report those to you today. We also do perform what's called a single audit. That is the audit of the city's federal awards. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the city's compliance with each major federal program. Once again, that's the best opinion that you can receive as a result of your audit. We also did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control over compliance that are in accordance with uniform guidance. As a result of the audit, we could have items that we consider to be either corrected or uncorrected misstatements, meaning things that we found as a result of our audit procedures that either we asked the city to correct, or they chose not to correct. I am pleased to report to you that we did not have any corrected or uncorrected misstatements as a result of our audit procedures. Management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. The city's accounting policies are described in Note 1 of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. In Note 17 of the financial statements, you will note that the city did adopt GASB statement number 87 for leases, and accordingly, they have retrospectively applied that accounting principle, and there is a corresponding restatement for the implementation of the As a part of our audit, we're also required to gain an understanding of the city's related parties. We did not identify any related parties that had not previously been disclosed to us. We didn't find any significant related party transactions that were in accordance with the city's policies or procedures. All of the significant transactions appeared to have proper business purpose. We did not notice, note any kind of noncompliance with laws or regulations as a result of these procedures, and we didn't have any kind of difficulties in identifying who the city's related parties are. We also did not note any transactions that were entered into during the year, that there appear to be a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. All transaction, significant transactions have been recognized in the proper period. In the financial statements, there are some things that we consider to be accounting estimates. These items mean, this, what this basically means is that those items can change from year to year, based on the inputs that go into making those assumptions. The city's most sensitive estimates affecting the financial statements were its allowance for doubtful accounts, for its taxes receivable, the capital asset depreciable lives, those actuarially computed pension and OPEB assets and liabilities, as well as any risk management claim liabilities. The financial statement disclosures are considered to be neutral, consistent, and clear. We do also provide some nonattest services as a part of our audit process, that, the first one being that we do complete the appropriate sections of the data collection form. This is required as a part of the single audit, where we, where the information of the city is submitted to the federal audit clearinghouse. We also assist in the preparation of the School Division Financial Statements and Schedules for inclusion in the city's annual comprehensive financial report. As a part of this process, the city does identify someone who is responsible for those procedures, and they make all related management decisions. We aren't aware of any circumstances or relationships that impair our auditor independence. We are independent of the city, and we have met all of our ethical responsibilities in accordance with relevant ethical requirements relating to our audits. And just some required communications. I am pleased to report that we did not have any difficulties that we encountered in dealing with management or in performing our audit. We did not have any disagreements. We're not aware where there were any, well, there were no auditor consultations that were considered to be difficult or contentious. We did have management sign of representation letter at the conclusion of our audit, which basically is them representing to us that they provided us all the information that we needed to perform our audit procedures. We are not aware of any consultations with other accountants as a part of this process. We did not have any other findings or issues that need to be reported to you. We did not identify any fraud, illegal acts, or violations of laws or regulations that would be required to be reported to you, and there are no events or conditions noted that indicate any kind of ability to, ability to continue as a going concern. There are multiple sections in the annual comprehensive report, so we do issue our opinion on the basic financial statements. There is a section called Required Supplementary Information. This is management's discussion and analysis, as well as the required supplementary information as listed in the Table of Contents. That information, we do not express any opinion or provide any assurance on that information. The other supplementary information we provide in, in relation to opinion, that includes the other supplementary information as listed in the Table of Contents, as well as the Schedule of Expenditure of Federal Awards. And then, lastly, there is a section called Other Information. This includes the introductory and statistical sections, where we do not provide, express an opinion or provide any form of assurance. And last item I just want to mention is that next year, GASB statement number 96 for subscription-based information technology arrangements will be applicable. It's very similar to the lease standard, where if there is a information technology arrangement that is subscription-based, the city will be required to bring on a right-to-use asset and a corresponding liability. I would like to thank Ms. Hanson and the Finance Department for all of their help in performing our audit. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harden. Counsel, any questions or comments from either Ms. Harden or Ms. Hanson? Quiet group this afternoon. I would like to make a brief comment. Obviously, this is good news, I mean, really good news. I think it's what's called a clean audit. Not really any points of contention or issues with anything, and not that I would expect one out of our personnel, because that's normally not the case, but it is good to know that it, there is, it is independently audited. The numbers that we looked at from last year are exceptional. I mean, to be able to reach our 20% unassigned fund balance is going to bode well when it comes time for bond rating time again, and the additional funds that we have. I think we're as prepared as what we can be for any contingencies that head our way. So once again, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Okay. We'll now move to our next item, which is Hampton Roads Sanitation District Suffolk Capital Projects Overview. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As you're aware, we work closely with the Hampton Roads Sanitation District, as we are a member community of the district. With us this evening is Jay Burness, HRSD's General Manager, along with his staff. Jay's going to provide us, and his staff's going to provide us, an overview of several of the projects coming up or ongoing within the city, and some of the efforts that we work together on. And with that, Jay, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Really happy to be here to talk about some of the projects we've got going on in the City of Suffolk. Excuse me, just a quick outline. There are some easements on your agenda this evening, so I'll give you a quick briefing on that, and then switch gears and talk about our SWIFT program, and how that's related to the nutrient trading agreement we have with the City of Suffolk, provide you an overview of HRSD's integrated plan, and then dive a little bit deeper into some of the large-scale projects we've got going on in Northern Suffolk. And as you know, HRSD, we are the regional wastewater authority in southeastern Virginia. We serve 20 cities and counties, and we recently took over the eastern shore. We serve 1.9 million people, over 20% of all Virginians. And all we do is wastewater, even though on a daily basis, people call us and ask us why we didn't pick up their trashcans. So, but we, all we do is wastewater. So on your agenda tonight is this project. It's related to our Suffolk Pump Station and Shingle Creek Rehabilitation. So if you look at that image, on the top of that satellite image, that green line, that's our existing force main. One of the things we're trying to do is abandon that yellow square, that's our Suffolk Pump Station, and that dashed yellow and red line, that's a gravity sewer line that runs in the middle of Shingle Creek and has been very problematic for us over the years. In order to abandon those, that infrastructure, we have to build two new pump stations. Those are the red squares, and with that, we've got to pump that flow through those blue force mains into that existing green interceptor. And if you look in the middle of that photograph, you see a red cloud. That's around the Cypress Park, and that's where we need those easements. And this is just to zoom in of what we're looking at in Cypress Park. We do have this agreement proposed with city staff as, in order to get that easement, which is that permanent easement, that's the, the green shaded area, the yellow part is a proposed temporary easement, and that aqua blue is a proposed ingress egress easement. The agreement we have with the city is funding for a park amenity at $198,000 for the park. We're going to clear that area to the right where that tree area is for a future city trail, and then funding for replacement of trees in that park, and then pavement restoration. As you can see, that permanent easement, where we're going to have to put that line goes through that parking lot. And so, switching gears, I'm going to talk about our SWIFT program, which you may have heard about. It was on the front page of the New York Times a few weeks ago. What, in the SWIFT program, what we're trying to do is take our highly-treated effluent, run it through an advanced water treatment process, take that purified water that meets drinking water standards, and pump that into the Potomac Aquifer, which has a number of benefits. Most importantly, it reduces the amount of nutrients going into the Chesapeake Bay, and is a critical component of the Commonwealth's strategy to meet the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Load, to reduce nutrients going into the bay. But not only that, if you look at that image, 20% of our region gets their groundwater from the Potomac Aquifer, including two large paper mills, and that aquifer does not get naturally replenished. So this SWIFT water is intended to create this natural, sustainable groundwater supply, if you can imagine that. Because what's happening is, the Potomac Aquifer continues to decline in water levels, those clay soils begin to compact, and as those clay soils compact, that's what's causing Hampton Roads to sink. And so sea level's rising, Hampton Roads is sinking. And NOAA estimated in their 2022 report that Hampton Roads is going to see sea level rise between 12 to 15 inches, and about a third of that is due to land subsidence due to overwithdrawal of the aquifer. It's surprising that you would think that rain would naturally replenish this aquifer, but it's a confined aquifer, so it does not get naturally replenished. And so that's another key component of this project, is the potential to reduce that land subsidence. And then if you notice in that image, the Chesapeake Bay and the Potomac Aquifer, there's no barrier. That's called the freshwater-saltwater interface. So as you can continue to pull water from the aquifer, you pull that saltwater into the aquifer, and you could potentially have irreversible saltwater contamination. And so in that advanced water treatment process, we take a multi-barrier approach. So it's a multifaceted, each one of these treatment trains removes certain things. So for example, pharmaceuticals, if phloxid doesn't get it, then the ozone gets it. If that doesn't get it, then biofiltration, and so on and so forth. So this is an advanced water treatment process that purifies the water to meet drinking water standards before it goes into the aquifer, but it also meets the geochemistry of the existing aquifer, which is very important. And this is our demonstration facility. It's our SWIFT Research Center. This is located at our enhancement plant in Northern Suffolk. It's an award-winning project in 2018, that was built in 2018, and in that same year, we won the prestigious U.S. Water Prize. This facility is designed for 1 million gallons a day. I think to date, we've pumped about 650 million gallons into the aquifer. And in fact, next Tuesday, the Governor of Virginia is coming to tour that facility. So now I'm going to switch gears and talk about our nutrient trading agreement with the City of Suffolk, and with all the localities in Hampton Roads. But before I get into that, what I do want to talk about is the backstory on how we, how we got here, because I think that's important. So this all started with a consent decree for sanitary sewer overflows, or SSOs, and it started in 2006. So, long story short, between that time and 2017, we worked with all of the localities to develop a regional wet weather management plan that was estimated at $1.8 billion. And what that was intended to do was increase the capacity of the sanitary sewer system by adding, you know, larger pipelines, more pump stations, storage tanks within the regional wastewater system. Well, on a parallel path, in 2014, HRSD embarked on a separate feasibility study. At the time, we called it the Aquifer Replenishment Program, which later became SWIFT. After about a few years, we determined that it was feasible. We did a pilot study. So in 2017, we talked to the EPA about, hey, this wet weather plan's going to cost us $1.8 billion, but that's not our most important environmental project for our community. Can you let us look at the integrated planning framework, which allows us to prioritize the most important environmentally beneficial projects first? So EPA agreed, we did a Fourth Amendment to our consent decree, and at that same time, as I mentioned before, SWIFT is going to create a significant amount of nutrient credits. And we had talked to the state, and they are allowing us, as a wastewater utility, to trade those nutrient credits with our localities, and I'll talk about, more about that in a second. And so, the next few years, we finalized our integrated plan, and then in February of 2022, the judge finally signed our integrated plan, so now we're in the execution phase. So in 2017, what was going on was all the localities in Hampton Roads were facing a 2025 deadline to do these stormwater retrofits, to meet the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, to reduce nutrients, because every sector had to do their part. Wastewater sector had to do their part, stormwater has to do their part, and agricultural has to do their part. And what these retrofits were, where they had to build these BMPs, and they can be in different forms, but I think most people are familiar with these wet PMPs that are, you know, around Walmart or other big box stores, and you would have to go into existing neighborhoods where there was an existing stormwater outfall and install these facilities. And that's why you see these numbers being so huge. So, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission estimated the cost of installing these all around Hampton Roads at $1.8 billion, and that was in November of 2017. They estimated Suffolk's cost was $109 million. And so one of the things that HRSD said is, if, if SWIFT is successful, we get all the federal, state, and local approvals, we will trade for no, no cost, because our ratepayers are your citizens too, that you won't have to spend those hundreds of millions of dollars to do these stormwater retrofits. So all of those trading agreements were signed by every locality in the region. And if you look at the amount of credits that, nutrient credits that SWIFT has available, in each graph, the one on the left is for nitrogen, the one on the right is for phosphorus. Those credits on the left side, that's the amount of credits we have available from SWIFT, and on the right side, those are the MS4s, essentially those are the stormwater needs for the region. So as you can see, we have sufficient credits to cover the entire region for both nitrogen and phosphorus. And now I'm going to switch gears and talk about how this all rolls into our integrated plan, and what was codified and signed by the judge in February of this year. So by 2025, that first row, HRSD will have spent $700 million on our Phase 1, and that includes our Rehab Action Plan. And that project I talked about initially, that Suffolk Pump Station Shingle Creek Project, is one of those projects that's required to be done by 2025. And if you recall, I talked about a $1.8 billion regional wet weather plan. So part of the negotiation of, the idea of prioritizing the highest beneficial, most environmentally beneficial project first is, for that wet weather component, let's only spend $400 million on the high priority projects to reduce 69% of the SSOs. And as you can see, if you do the quick math, that means that to get out the remaining 39% was going to cost $1.4 billion. And so what we talked to the EPA about is, instead of spending $1.4 billion to get that last remaining portion out, let's spend it on SWIFT. So now SWIFT is incorporated into the integrated plan, and so by 2032, we have to spend over $1 billion on SWIFT, which makes more sense. You know, I talked about how beneficial SWIFT is to the region relative to SSOs, and just as a heads up, in fiscal year '22, HRSD had zero capacity-related wet weather overflows. So it makes sense not to spend that $1.4 billion on wet weather, but to spend it on SWIFT. That has so many benefits: nutrients, land subsidence, a sea level rise piece, sustainable groundwater supply. So it just makes a lot of sense. And if we have time later, I can talk about the microbial source tracking, which HRSD is one of the first in the country to do, and we work very closely with the City of Suffolk on that piece. And now, switching gears, I'm going to let Lauren Zarivinsky, she's our Chief of Design and Construction SWIFT, to talk about some of the large projects we've got going on in Northern Suffolk.
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you, Jay. Thank you for your time, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. I appreciate it. Okay. So my role within HRSD is to implement capital programs and infrastructure that meet our mission and our regulatory requirements. While our mission has stayed the same for a number of years, throughout really our whole existence, our regulatory requirements continue to evolve. existence, our regulatory requirements continue to evolve. Most current evolution is defined by Virginia House Bill 2129, which defines the Enhanced Nutrient Removal Certainty Program. Within that House bill, there's laid out a number of priority projects with an implementation schedule and a water quality target that lays out how the Commonwealth of Virginia is going to be meeting the Chesapeake Bay Phase 3 Watershed Implementation Program, or Planted Program, whichever P we're using at this time. So if you've heard WIP 3, WIP 3 and the Chesapeake Bay Goals, this House bill defines how the Commonwealth is going to meet these goals. And it lines out a number of priority projects throughout the state, and it defines a number of the commitments that HRSD will have to make to support the Commonwealth's goals. And it also notes that our Boat Harbor projects and our Nansman projects are located here in Suffolk. So we have a number of really large capital projects that are going to get us to meet those commitments and support the Commonwealth's goals. Starting in the northern end of this graphic here, we're going to be constructing a new equalization tank and pumping station in Newport News, close to where our Boat Harbor Treatment Plant is today, so that we can sunset that plant and then convey screened and de-gritted wastewater through a new transmission force main. That whole green line here is a really long, brand-new, quite large force main that'll connect this new pumping station in Newport News to our Nansman Treatment Plant in Suffolk. We're going to be expanding the hydraulic and treatment capacity at the Nansman Treatment Plant and then ultimately constructing SWIFT advanced treatment facilities and recharge wells. So you'll see a number of green dots throughout of slides that we've got here today. Those are representing the recharge wells needed for aquifer recharge. And so, with the opportunity that a number of these investments are going to be made in Suffolk, we appreciate the opportunity to continue to work with Suffolk and Suffolk staff to make sure the municipal requirements are met for the City of Suffolk and to implement great projects like we've done on the SWIFT Research Center, coordinating with staff and with representatives of the city. One of the key pieces we're going to start talking about is our Nansman Treatment Plant. It's called out with some purple letters here and and yellow letters, actually, there's two sets of that project. It's nestled along the shores of the James River on the east side of 664 as it's approaching the Monitor Merrimack Bridge Tunnel. And so, the Nansman Treatment Plant was built in 1984 with an initial capacity of only 10 million gallons per day, so MGD being millions of gallons per day, it's a treatment capacity. We expanded that treatment plant in 1993 to handle the growth of the region, and it's at 30 million gallon per day capacity now. And that's really the current date of our current conditional use permit for that facility. In 2019, or actually, 2018, excuse me, we worked with the City of Suffolk to approve a temporary use permit to construct and operate the SWIFT Research Center at that Nansman facility. This was done with the understanding that we would be bringing a full conditional use permit request to the city at the time it was appropriate to do so, and here we are today, working through the application process right now. It's in the hands of the planning staff and Planning Commission. And this gave us four years of the opportunity to continue to gain operational experience with SWIFT treatment and aquifer recharge. And as Jay pointed out, we've been successfully treating to SWIFT water and creating an aquifer recharge capabilities since 2018 with multiple oversight entities, both EPA, we're permitted through, we have a state oversight committee, and a state oversight committee is associated with a lab that's overseeing the operation at the SWIFT Research Center and will continue to do so on the full-scale facilities, both here in Nansman and elsewhere within the district. So since this time in 2018, SWIFT has become a required tool to be able to meet nutrient management for the state and also for local water quality and for the Chesapeake Bay restoration. And so, it's the conditional use permit application that's in process right now has two main requests. It's looking to increase the wastewater treatment capacity of our Nansman Treatment Plant to 50 million gallons per day treatment capacity. That'll allow us to handle growth within the region and to close the Boat Harbor Treatment Capacity. And in doing so, we'll be able to improve the treatment capacity there, both hydraulic and and actual wastewater process, by implementing some of the innovative work that our research and development team's been doing. And additional to that, we're looking to add advanced water treatment processes to be able to generate SWIFT water and to recharge the Potomac Aquifer with a, excuse me, a sustainable source of groundwater. So due to the fact that these are very large capital projects, we've had to work through the size and scope of them and the impact on HRSD's cash flow. So the two blue bars here are showing the design-build processes that we're using to implement what were the top blue bar, being the wastewater treatment process upgrades, and the lower blue bar, the recharge well and the advanced treatment facilities. We're looking to do sequential design so that we would minimize the overlap in construction where the large impact to HRSD's cash flow would be. So currently, our design focus is in the wastewater treatment expansion portion of it. So in the conditional use application, you'll see a lot more detail in this area. We're taking some of the treatment capacity tanks and expanding them, adding multiple facilities here. So this is a rendering of what the finished facilities will be. There's a subtle coloration between more gray and more beige. The more beige tanks are existing, one will have new equalization tanks, new secondary clarifiers, which are the two circular tanks you can see off to the right. And another of another of facilities that are in there that are going to be key to being able to expand not only hydraulically, how much water we can move through, but that endpoint of quality, the improved quality that we'll be able to provide at this facility. And so, all of those facilities will have very similar character to the operational facilities that we have now on the wastewater treatment plant site. And as I said, SWIFT is becoming a required tool to be able to meet nutrient management. These SWIFT facilities will now expand onto the adjacent parcels, and they'll again have similar character. We're talking about concrete tanks, buildings, piping and infrastructure, similar character beyond the tree barrier along 664 within the internal part of our parcels. This will be a 33 MGD recharge capacity. It'll be permitted by EPA. EPA has oversight on our aquifer recharge. It'll have the multiple barrier treatment processes that Jay had shown earlier, and a distribution network recharging, connecting all of the Potomac Aquifer recharge wells. As we're looking to leverage design-build experience, again, hiring the designer and the builder at the same time, that process is going to start in February next year, and we'll look to have a design builder on-site and on the team by the end of 2023. So we'll see more refinement in the actual facilities, although we have an idea on where they'll be placed. We're looking to really use the builder's expertise to get our best value out of this. What's the best place to put these facilities and to be able to keep them at a reasonable use of site and resources? Now, there'll be recharge wells on-site. You can see on the east side of 664, multiple green dots. But there's a number of off-site managed aquifer recharge wells that'll be needed. The conditional use permits for those sites, you'll see separately. Right now, we're currently working, and we appreciate the opportunity to work closely with TCC to define those recharge well sites, also with the G's Group and with Suffolk Economic Development. So we're looking to clarify where those final locations will be, and we'll provide that as a separate permit opportunity in the future. We're looking to place those off-site wells along the force main route as it comes over under the James River and over through Suffolk to the Nansman Treatment Facility. Again, we're going to be working with those same private entities, TCC, G's Group, as well as Suffolk Economic Development, to finalize this route. It'll be a large HDPE force main. It'll actually be working with VDOT to microtunnel under 664, and we're looking to coordinate and move that project forward as well. And so, really, in summary, there are a lot of major projects throughout the state that are required by House Bill 2129 to be able to meet Chesapeake Bay restoration goals. HRSD's made a commitment to achieve a number of those through priority projects which are located in Suffolk. And it's really through the enhancement of SWIFT and the advanced water treatment that we're going to be able to meet nutrient goals for the Commonwealth and provide the opportunity to trade with municipalities such as Suffolk. And through our conditional use application, we're looking for the ability to implement these projects. We're ready to go on the wastewater treatment ones. We could be able to operate, initiate construction as soon as that application is worked through the process. And we look forward to the ongoing development and coordination with the City of Suffolk to implement the remainder of the projects. And so, if that, if there's any questions of myself and Jay Bernis, we'd like to answer them.
Counsel, questions or comments from Mr. Bernis or Ms.?
Zarivinsky.
Fear Zarivinsky.
Yeah.
How if I just call you Lauren?
That's fine, too.
Let's do it the easy way. Lauren Z, we already have a Z, so you can be a Z. Counsel, questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you so much. This is a very good presentation, very aggressive operations that HRSD has taken on through its building processes. And I had an opportunity to go out to the SWIFT plant when it was first initiated. Not quite clear, I went to drink the water that they had off to the side for a taste test, but it was very impressive. And I think what I like is the fact that you're recharging and you're going to, you know, reinsert that water into the aquifer is is a big deal. And the more we can capture that and put nice freshwater back in, certainly makes all the sense in the world. It's an expensive process to begin with, as we know, but I think the long range environmentally, it's going to be a great tool. I guess you use the other portions of the waste that get separated out for maybe a fertilizer operation, or maybe you could tell me a little bit about that, maybe offbeat a little bit. But I know there's a separation there where that other material gets displaced, and I think it gets an opportunity where it can be used as a fertilizer for whatever, for whatever need. Might expand on that a little bit.
Sure. At our Nansman Facility, we do have a public-private partnership, which is called the Austera Program, and that actually does capture the nitrogen and phosphorus that's removed. I think it's primarily phosphorus, but there's some other capture removed through wastewater treatment and to provide a reusable resource for a soil amendment. I actually believe it's sold locally as well under a different name. I'm not sure if I remember the name on it. So there is, as we're removing nutrients from the wastewater, we're looking to capture them in that sense, in the product that's available. We're also looking to manage the solids that are replaced. Throughout the district, we're looking for great ways to do so. So some of it is composted and some of it is digested and used.
Now, in the replenishment, are you guys at capacity with the SWIFT now that you're pumping into the aquifer at this point? Or I know this expansion will probably enhance that or so with the additional wells that you got, going to place out in different locations.
Correct. We have a capacity for 1 million gallon per day right now that we've been operating for the last four years. The work that we're doing in Nansman will lead to an additional 33 million gallons per day capacity.
That's going to be a pretty significant pushdown in there. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you coming, because, I mean, that was enlightening. I just, that was, I mean, going back, going to the SWIFT plant and then listening to this presentation kind of comes to me how it all came together, and I see where you guys are trying to go, and I think it's going to be great for the future.
Thank you.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you. I think you might have answered some of my questions from what you said to Mr. Fawcett dealing with the nutrients. I was interested in what you did with those nutrients and how you composted it or are you selling it? It's a product out there now, I take it, on the market that can be used in gardens and things of that nature?
So the Austera Program allows the private company that we work with to then sell and market that material. Actually, don't remember what the the market name is, but it is something that's removed the nutrients that are in, just present from natural wastewater, what we're providing to the collection system. It was actually removed through a biological process where the naturally occurring bacteria consume it, and it's through handling that material that we're able to remove it from the wastewater. So you'll typically see it in that amendment. A lot of it's captured in that Austera amendment that can be used as a fertilizer, and the remainder of it is just handled as residuals, just removal from the wastewater as biomass. It's just biological growth at that point, no longer nutrients-free in the water.
Thank you. Anywhere else in the country this being done?
So there's a number of different places. California is really one of the leaders. They've been looking at doing water reuse. There's a number of different places, and each place has a different driver for why they're doing it. In Florida, there's a number of organizations that are using aquifer recharge. They're doing it to avoid discharging water to the oceans. Anne Arundel County is actually another entity that's been looking at doing so with recovery and recharge for the Potomac Aquifer, similar to we are. There's places in Kansas that are looking to do specifically more for aquifer recovery. And then, there's places like El Paso where they're not doing aquifer recovery, but they're using these advanced water treatments to go right back into their drinking water system. So there's various places throughout the country using water reuse to reclaim water resources, but they have different drivers for each one of them.
When I was in El Paso, I didn't find any water.
You hadn't contributed enough yet.
Thank you very much.
Do you mind if I, I just add one more thing about the nutrient reduction. One of the things that HRSD is well-known for in the country is being an innovative wastewater utility. And one of the things we recently did this past year was patent a technology with DC Water, and the Nansman Plant will be the third plant in the world to have this mainstream is called Partial Denitrification Anamox, and it saves a significant amount of money. So in our industry, it could be a game changer. So we have the first plant in the world that's at York County. The second plant in the world will be at James City County. The third one will be at Nansman. So at the one that's currently working in York County, it's saving $1 million a year because it uses 50% less power and 80% less chemicals to reduce nutrients. So again, we get ROI on the research that we do, and so, Nansman, I mean, already, people from around the country are coming to visit that SWIFT Research Center. They will also come to see our Partial Denitrification Anamox Patent. It's a suite of patents. It's a number of different technologies that was a decade in development, so.
Councilman Johnson.
And the 33 million capacity that we're aiming for at this point, when will that start as far as putting that much back into the ground?
We're looking to be online by 2028, the end of 2028.
2028. And what is the maximum that we're looking at, what could eventually be? I mean, is there a higher amount we're looking for?
For Nansman, we're looking, that's our target.
That's the target.
For Suffolk, for the foreseeable future. We also have a facility, as Jay mentioned, in the, our James River facility in Newport News, that'll have 16 million gallons a day capacity. And that beyond that, we're looking to evaluate our operational profile after implementing those two facilities.
Do we gradually work up to it, or is it just by 28, we're going to be, that's what we, I'm just curious how it flows.
Yeah. We're able to pretty much meet that capacity. It's depending on what's coming in to the treatment plant, but we're looking to not build the most capacity. We're looking to right-size capacity based on the average of what we see now and with a little bit of growth into the future. So it may not be 33 on the first day, but it might be 30 MGD.
And that will fix the, I mean, that will fix the aquifer as far as bringing it back to the level that we desire?
So the intention is that it's a long-term buildup of water over time. So what you can actually, the water won't move very far. What our modeling has shown, actually, it's the state's hydraulic model has shown, is that the water, SWIFT water placed into the aquifer won't travel very far. It slows down over time, and I think it's about 50 years to go about a mile. But what we'll see is pressure recovery, that improvement of pressure recovery will happen gradually over time as volume is increased in those pore spaces between the clays and the sands and the Potomac Aquifer.
It's pretty amazing. But, and the funding for this project is coming basically from?
So we have a suite of funding that we're working towards. All of our projects are rate-fair funded, so all of us are working to implement this innovative project, but we've leveraged our opportunity to get WIFIA funding. We have about, sorry, I don't remember. I think it's almost $1 billion in WIFIA funding, which is federal funding. We're leveraging clean water revolving loan funding because a lot of this is applicable to those. And we're also pursuing Water Quality Improvement Fund grants and some ARPA funding as well. So we're looking at a suite of grants and loans to be able to make this more affordable for the whole region.
Very good. Thank you.
And on that note, we were recently notified that our James River and this Nansman Project were awarded $31.5 million of ARPA funding. There was $100 million available, and we almost got a third of it for HRSD to fund these projects. So the administration is definitely interested in this project because it has so many benefits. And one of the neat things about the Nansman Plant that, you know, we want to mention is that there's an extensometer there, and that's the device that the U.S. Geological Survey can measure how much of the land is moving. So even with our one MGD research facility, when we pump water in the ground, you can see the water, I mean, the land elevation, the land surface move higher. So it's really, really interesting. So there are four extensometers now throughout Hampton Roads to measure, well, there'll be a fourth one. The fourth one will be at West Point. That will measure whether or not SWIFT will help slow down land subsidence and will it make a difference from a resiliency standpoint to impact sea level rise, which Hampton Roads is struggling with.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll just wrap it up with a couple of comments. I have a lot of questions because that's a lot of information, and about 50% of it's over my comprehension level, but. But we'll continue to work on it. But some of the things that stood out, the Shingle Creek improvements, I mean, over recent years, we have had several problems, environmental issues created by multiple breaks, primarily from what I understand, just due to the age of the pipes and the pressure involved. And that has been fairly significant at times. So the fact that we're addressing that is huge and will help us in regards to any contamination in our waterways, Nansman River. Cypress Park, $198,000 to improve Cypress Park. That's very generous, and, you know, we as a city greatly appreciate the fact that HRSD has voluntarily agreed to provide that funding for improvements to the park as they use the easement. I know that the rechargeable well sites that were located on TCC, I think there's still some work to be done with TCC to get that coordinated and a meeting of the minds, if you will, before it comes to us, and I'm sure it'll come to us, with the blessing of TCC at the same time. And I know there's several considerations there without going into detail. I've got some questions on the SWIFT program, but I'll, with the credit program, but I'll get with the city manager on that later. He can explain it to me. I, too, went to the SWIFT opening when it was first initiated, and it's quite a project, I mean, it's quite a project when you think about it. We're taking waste oil and, waste oil, yeah, wastewater and injecting it into the aquifer, which I assume helps us with reliance on surface water, plus environmentally, it's of huge benefit. So it's really quite the operation, and I appreciate everything that you've done for our city and everything that you're doing for the region.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Councilman Goldberg.
I want to say, I'm glad there are a lot of smart people out there doing this, because it's pretty, it's pretty heavy stuff. And your whole team and everything, it's amazing to me. I'm just glad the universities are putting out such great talent.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes our two presentations. We do have need for a closed meeting this evening. Madam Clerk, if you would read the motion for consideration.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointments and the assignment appointment and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list, for vacancies or term expirations for the Clean Community Commission, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the Historic Landmark Commission, Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, the Western Tidewater Water Authority, and the Wetlands Board. And item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically tax map and parcel 25A-Aster-J17.
Counsel mission has been presented for consideration. Councilman Fawcett.
I move to approve, Mayor.
Motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg, is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepared to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to zero.
That concludes our work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.